Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. We'll do a roll call and declaration of conflicts of interest, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abraham, here and done. Councilmember Bixel?
Here and done.
Vice Mayor Moniz is not here. Councilmember Phillips?
Here and done.
Mayor Bill Black.
Here and done, okay. Approval of agenda is posted or amended.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. We'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham? Yes. Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black.
Yes, passes on a four zero. All right, the first drum roll, we're doing Adopt Pets. Holly is coming in, bring her. Bring her. Don't all fight for her.
Good evening. So tonight with me, I have Holly. She is a ten-month-old corgi border collie mix is what we think she is. She will be available this coming Thursday for adoption. So first come, first served. We open at nine thirty, so hopefully we see a line of cars out our gate. Um, I also wanted to present a video, our Twelve Strays of Christmas.
Oh, how cute.
And we're going to be waiving adoption fees throughout the rest of the month of December. So some of these are our longest residents that we have here at the shelter. The catchy song, I thought, you know.
It was.
But yeah, so we're going to be waiving adoption fees. Our shelter still is full, so we're hoping to make some room. Um, so Holly will be available on Thursday if you're interested.
What else do we know about Holly?
Um, she has a sad story. She was left abandoned in a laundry room. So, uh, we got the call that she was left behind and, um, she needs to learn how to be a dog still. She doesn't know how to walk on a leash, but with some time, she'll settle right in nicely. And she's very cute.
She's not going to do your laundry, George.
You need a closer look.
Uh-oh. This is our parting gift to you, George.
A little bit of lousy teacher.
All right, the next thing we have is a recognition for Stanislaus State Men's Soccer Team 2025. You'll be reading, I'll stand over there. If guys want to kind of position that way, we'll kind of get over there.
Hey, thanks for being here. Um, I know it's finals week, so it's really nice, it's really nice to have you all here. It's going to take me a minute because they had a really remarkable season. They set a program record of seventeen, two, and one, achieving the highest winning percentage in school history. They reached number one in the nation for two consecutive weeks. They captured the CCAA Tournament Championship for the first time since 2012. They advanced to the NCAA Division Two Third Round, uh, the deepest postseason in a decade, and we all wish they were playing this weekend. They earned ten All-CCA selections, including Coach of the Year, John Powell. People could just raise their hand, let us know who they are. I saw Coach somewhere. Although I'm not congratulating him, he brought the mayor a sweatshirt. And not me.
I'm a warrior.
Uh, Forward of the Year, Dorado Flores. Goalkeeper of the Year, Angel Ruiz Hernandez. Freshman of the Year, Sebastian Cabalha. Uh, Offensive MBP, Sammy Villanueva. Defensive MBP, Ian Reese. All-Tournament Team, Alexis Cervantes. All-Tournament Team, Emmanuel Duran. And All-Tournament Team, Angel Ruiz Hernandez. They achieved numerous school records, academic distinctions, and individual milestones that elevate the pride of Warrior Athletics and the Turlock community. And we found out, I think today, there were two D-two All-Americans, CCAA, Sammy Villanueva and Angel was first team, and Angel Ruiz Hernandez was third team. Congratulations and thanks for representing Turlock well.
I was going to have Sammy come and say something, but I don't think he wants to. No, I love a mic, the boys know. Um, first and foremost, just thank you so much. Born and raised in Modesto. Have never been here, never been to a city hall meeting, anything like that for any of the local, uh, towns, but this group is pretty special. And I, their accolades are great, everything they've achieved, and there's more coming. All Regions coming out, or it came out today. All-American will come out. Um, but ultimately, they do a lot in the community, but also in the classroom, on the pitch. So just a blessing to coach these guys and to be here and share it with you guys. And I just wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
I think, yeah. Come on, Erin, you're up, buddy. Athletic Director of Stanislaus? These guys are going to be in the Hall of Fame eventually.
Really are putting me on the spot. Um, no, this was a special group. Um, and, and I think what makes them special, more so than just how they performed on the field, was, was the character with which they did it. So from the athletic department, thank all of you. Um, but I really think it starts from the top, and our coach is phenomenal. And he did a really good job of bringing this team together. And what they did to represent Stanislaus State and put us on a national map was really, really big. Um, and I think it's something that our community should be proud of. So thank you for having us here. Um, this is a huge honor. And again, like Coach Powell said, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. So thank you.
So, uh, you guys want to figure out how you want us to all line up in here for the picture?
Yeah, so we're going to, I'll try and pack it with this area here.
If you guys can start to file in over here, we'll fill this U shape up.
And this is for you to hold, sir.
All right, guys, everyone looking towards me here. Here you go. Ready, three, two, one. On the time, three, two, one. Everyone say soccer?
Soccer!
Right, everyone right here, one, two, three.
Thank you, guys. Take good luck on your finals.
Take Holly with you. Oh, you can't till Thursday, never mind. Not bad. What I do here? Yeah. If you guys don't mind, I'm just going to go give them all, and then we'll just do one motion. These aren't in order.
As they reset the room, I just want to make one comment. I didn't want to take away from them here. But people, I don't know if people know this, that our mayor is also a Hall of Fame athlete from Stan State. And so I just always think it's nice to remind people of that.
Now you're asking why you didn't get the shirt?
Go on, take him the shirt.
All right, the next thing we have here is appointments to Measure L. And I suggest it be Pam Franco, Parks Art Recreation Commission, Brent Bolander, Michael Cassal, and Chehu Hassan. Uh, CDBG, Allison Jeffrey, Dejean Shelton, Ron Breigroom, Lupe Aguilar, and Nathan Corey Higgins. And finally, Planning Commission, Matthew Davis and Patrick Shields. And I would make a motion to all of those positions, those people.
And a second?
Yeah, motion in second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham? Yes. Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, okay. And all of them are now duly noted as the right people. They're in, okay. Public participation is, this time is set aside for members of the public to address council on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda, but are subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. You can have three minutes, and there is a timer there and there. And, uh, we may or may not be able to respond to your statement. We might steer you towards somebody or ask for your information. And I have a Zachary. It filled out a card? Oh, my bad, I didn't see that. Ten, okay, my bad, my bad. Okay, I don't have any cards. Anybody wishing to speak in public comment? Sorry, you're next. I didn't see ten, my bad.
Good evening, Milt Treeweiler. We learn from the past, we live in the present, and we plan for the future. I'm speaking today to make everyone aware that Stanislaus County has something that's not found anyplace else on the earth. The farmland in the central part of our county is irreplaceable. We have the prime farmland soils, we have the irrigation water, and we have the Turlock irrigation and Modesto irrigation districts, and we have the climate. We can grow fruit and nut tree crops not found anywhere else on the earth. To my fellow community members and good thoughtful people of Stanislaus County, it's our responsibility to see that the farmland is saved and preserved. Agriculture is our number-one industry in Stanislaus County. Now is the time to do what must be done to preserve our Stanislaus County farmland forever. We must be good stewards for our children and descendants, since they cannot plan for themselves. They can't plan for themselves because they're too young or they haven't even been born yet. There's not one acre of farmland in some entire states and even countries as good as the farmland we have here. There is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California and our nation for the developers to build homes, warehouses, and industry on. We're educated adults, and we have an intellect, and we have choices. And yet a few thoughtless people are choosing not to conserve the priceless resources we have. We do not want to use up this farmland that will be needed for our children and future generations. Our farmland areas in the MID and TID irrigation districts are already fully economically developed. They're producing food for our state and our nation. This farmland can produce food for our children and future generations for hundreds of years. Now is the time to shut this senseless growth down. We know that creating a food desert in Stanislaus County would be a terrible choice to make. The future for our children and descendants is our responsibility. We are intelligent and educated adults, and we know that this irreplaceable farmland must be saved. We must stop all growth on farmland in the MID and TID irrigation districts today. In the TID and MID irrigation districts of Stanislaus County, we must build up on the infill and blighted areas of our cities and neighborhood communities. We need to build an abundance of high-rise, luxury, and affordable apartment complexes, townhouses, and condominiums to save this farmland for our children and our descendants. I know we can do this. You know we can do this. Now is the time to do it. It's not going to happen instantly, it's going to take time, but we have to start planning today so that this land is saved for our children and descendants. We're the adults, we're the parents, we're the ones that responsible for our descendants. Our ancestors took care of us, we got this beautiful land, beautiful Turlock, we got a beautiful dam, everything is great, we need to keep it. Thank you.
Uh, young lady, yes, come on up.
Hello, council members. My name's America Lizondo Lara, and I serve as the Governmental Relations Student Coordinator for the Associated Student, Inc. at Stanislaus State. I'm a first-year and a commuter who drives more than twenty minutes to campus every day. Many of my classmates drive even farther, and gas prices continue to rise. On top are already costly on-campus parking permits. Free and accessible parking isn't a luxury but a necessity for our campus. I'm here alongside with Manny Delgado, our Vice President of Finance for ASI, who, like me, represents the student body and understands how important these free parking spaces are. On Tuesday, December second, at seven forty-five AM, our Chief of Police Department counted seventy-four parking spaces along Gear Road. The number shows how heavily students rely on this area, because these spaces turn over throughout the day while over a hundred depend on the parking daily. A major reason we park here is approximately for Student Recreation Center, which has limited paid parking permits filling quickly. Gear Road has also provided only free parking within reasonable blocking distance of important locations like the athletic center and athletic fields, especially during soccer games. Removing these parking spots would place a burden on students and many other students who commute along from a distance. While raising fuel costs and expensive permits, losing these spaces directly harms students who are already navigating financial challenges. Beyond student, the local community members also use these spots without clear ways of designating students from residents. Removing these would cause confusion and enforcing challenges. Stanford State values affordability, accessibility, and fairness. Removing this would widely use free parking areas, conduct these values, and negatively impact on both the students and community. We respectfully ask the council to reconsider the removal of the parking on Gear Road for a bike lane and provide the needed for the people who depend on these spaces every day. Thank you for your time and considerations, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Julian Phillips. I'm a district representative with the Office of Senator Alvarado Gill. I just thought I would come this evening and introduce myself, as I, uh, joined the office in September, and highlight some of the outreach that we've been doing in the city of Turlock. This past Friday, the senator participated in the Turlock Christmas Parade. This is also my second time hosting mobile office hours here in the city of Turlock. In October, I hosted office hours at the library this evening. I was, um, it's a pleasure to coordinate with the clerk to host mobile office hours here in the building, um, in advance of the meeting as well. Um, I cover Stanislaus County. I focus mostly on water and agricultural issues and also local government. And I apologize for not getting here, um, in advance of the start of the meeting, but I'll turn in my comment card along with my contact information if there's anything that you need from our office. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment and move on to the city manager's updates.
Thank you. Good evening, I have a couple of things. I'm going to start by asking, uh, Director Chris Fisher if he would speak to the parking issue, uh, over near Stan State. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and that's, that's a very important concern, you know, and we recognized that early on. In fact, over a year ago, we started meeting with Stan State to have some mutually beneficial resolution, um, incorporating into our design plans. It's unfortunate we couldn't reach a resolution with that, but, um, it's not from a lack of trying, um, and we are going to continue to work with them. And in fact, in the future, if they wish to, to participate in that, we can make those changes for them. You have a question?
Thanks. Um, I also want to read a statement here, just, uh, because we heard just before we, uh, came into council today that, um, there was utility marking activity by a contractor working on behalf of Race Communications along Wellerman Way and Michael Way. Once the contractor learned this neighborhood is part of the cherished Christmas Tree Lane tradition, they assured us no construction would take place in the area during the holiday season and confirmed all work will begin after the first of the year. They also canceled their USA ticket to prevent any additional markings during this time. They've confirmed that none of their contractors will be working in Turlock between December, January, between December twenty-three and January four, uh, helping to ensure residents and visitors can fully enjoy the festivities. Uh, we appreciate the community's understanding, thank the contractor for their cooperation in supporting one of Turlock's most beloved holiday traditions. Residents with questions are encouraged to contact the Muni Municipal Services Department. You might imagine, you know how this goes, men, it hits social media, and we got a flood, uh, this afternoon, and as did some of the council members start getting calls, there is not going to be work going on on, uh, Christmas Tree Lane. So, um, you know, the important things first there. Uh, a couple of things that I want to update you on. Um, they, uh, we have launched a new Measure A webpage on the city website. Uh, it has the, the contents have been, uh, reviewed and approved by the Measure A Committee. Social media posts went out notifying the public on November second. We're trying to make sure people know how Measure A funding continues, uh, to be spent, and you can find it there. Uh, the leaf pickup program started strong. Crews have already collected and disposed over six-point-five million pounds of leaves. Their work is helping keep neighborhoods clean. And I've said this to you before, I'm a little bit of a geek. I mean, six-point-five million pounds of leaves, and we're just starting. The Business Assistance Drop-In Program is a new program, uh, perfect for new and existing businesses seeking guidance. Every Tuesday from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, nine-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM, we'll have somebody stationed downstairs. Um, information will be available on business grants, connection to support businesses, resources, and organizations. Discover Turlock for the holidays, we've talked about that. Some of you have seen this campaign performing very well, uh, inviting consumers and visitors to experience Turlock community events. In the last forty-five days, our city Instagram page has had over a million views related to that, um, related to that campaign. A couple new, well, new business opening soon. I know some of you are really anxious about this. Paving the way for Chick-fil-A, which is scheduled to break ground any day. Um, and this weekend, I guess, one night this weekend, we celebrated Craving Kebab's tenth anniversary. We, I was there with the mayor, we were able to stop by, and, um, nice family-owned business with lots of folks showing up for that. I sure hope you got to be at the parade. Um, it was a great night. I think that parade, um, says so much about who Turlock is. It kind of shows that, the spirit of Turlock. And I want to publicly thank the folks, uh, in Muni that really put in all the work to make that happen. If you were out about six or seven AM Saturday morning, you wouldn't know that there had been a parade by the time they got everything cleaned up afterwards. So, uh, I hope you all have a great holiday season. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to consent, uh, anyone wishing, I'll open it to the public, anyone wishing to speak about a specific consent, uh, agenda item? And you have one minute. Okay, closing public comment. What is the will of council?
Uh, move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. A motion in second, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on a four zero, thank you. Final readings, second final reading of, uh, an ordinance for our purchasing standardization. I will open it to the public. Close public comment, bring it back.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, call and roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on a four zero. Public hearing ten A. Introduction to a Muni code that will be Development Services Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill Black, council members and staff. Um, tonight, the, uh, item before you is the adoption of the twenty-twenty-six California Building Code. The state of California updates the building, the California Building Code on a three-year cycle. Um, the twenty-twenty-six California Building Code, along with, um, other applicable parts of Title Twenty-four, which is state, um, government, uh, title, becomes effective statewide on January first, twenty-twenty-six. Local jurisdictions are required to adopt these standards to remain consistent with state law and ensure, uh, in uniformity in building and life safety regulations. The city staff has reviewed the twenty-twenty-six, um, California Building Code along with related structural, fire, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, energy, and the green building standards to identify areas where local conditions, such as climate, geography, and topography, justified amendments tailored to Turlock's needs. Um, state law does allow, um, the local jurisdictions to adopt local amendments above the, um, the state, the CBC, the California Building Code, um, if they are, you know, they're tailored to our, our city specifically. Um, at this time, though, we are not proposing any local amendments. Um, staff will continue to look and review the twenty-twenty-six, um, codes from, uh, California Building Codes and our TMC, and if we have any other amendments, we'll be bringing them back to you, to you in the future. Um, and with that, I probably can't answer many questions because I'm not a building official, but I'll try.
Questions for the director? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Closing public comment?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on four zero. Thank you. Are you up for the next one?
I'm up for the next one, too.
Let's do this, okay, item B.
This one I can actually speak to. This item before you is, and we do these on a regular basis, semi-regular basis. Um, it's the annexation of two properties into the CFD, which is our Community Facilities District Number Two. Um, this, I believe, is the thirty-ninth annexation. Um, what the, what the CFD is for is for any, um, residential project or any, um, project that is going to have discretionary, um, permits through planning, through engineering, such as a parcel map, conditional use permit, um, any type of discretionary permit that is for a residential project has to annex into the CFD. And the CFD provides supported services for police, fire, and parks maintenance. And the first, uh, so that there's the one parcel, there are two parcels on, um, West Monta Vista and, um, Seasons Drive. It's the former Strawberry Patch. And that will be annexed into the CFD, um, as they move forward with, um, the building of, I believe it's a hundred and four homes in that property. The other one is out on, uh, Tuolumne, and it's also for a subdivision, um, of that property for, um, additional homes as well. Um, so with that, um, I will start, let's see. Ask the Madam Clerk if she can confirm receipt of the following documents. Proof of publication of the notice of public hearing, signed waiver and consent from the property being annexed, the completed and signed ballot, signed certificate of clerk regarding receipt of property owner waiver and consent form, and the ballot declaring election results.
So confirmed.
Okay, uh, any questions? All right, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
I just wanted to bring to your attention that this was a perfect property to put, um, high-rise buildings on. It was right there on Monta Vista, just across the street from, uh, the vistas. We could have put three or four-story buildings there, and I didn't know exactly how many, that was how many acres? I'm, okay, you can't answer, I understand. I'm going to say it was five acres, so usually you could get probably a hundred dwelling units in there, and I think you said there's only going to be thirty-four. So this is the way we save our farmland, we grow up and not out, and it's just natural. I mean, I know you don't want to starve your children, your descendants, but you're not thinking about it. You think about so many other things. But you have to think about reality and what's going to happen. Our ancestors thought about us. I mean, you won't believe, a hundred and thirty-eight years ago, what a challenge they had. But anyway, that's one thing that this property could have been used for, uh, high-rise buildings. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing and bring it back.
Uh, move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
With motion in a second, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on a four zero. You staying for this one, too?
I'm staying for this one, too.
Wow, it's your night.
Yeah. So tonight, uh, this item is, uh, the confirming, the city council confirming that no change in the cap of the number of beds, uh, be permitted in the nondiscretionary permit process for the SB two emergency shelter overlay district. Um, in two thousand and seven, there was a Senate bill, um, passed and that, um, required that, uh, the city identify an area that, um, emergency shelters could be built in with nondiscretionary, um, permitting, which means if you meet the, the criteria we set up, they, that were set up in the legislation, then they can go in with a nondiscretionary permit. So we do have an overlay district, um, and in your report, it's kind of bounded by A Street, um, center F Streets, um, and it encompasses about a hundred and it encompasses about 171 properties. Anything outside of that overlay district would require conditional use permit to be permitted. But within that district, the overlay district, if they met the non-discretionary requirements, then they would be allowed to have, an emergency shelter would be able to open. Currently, we do have, the city council had set a cap of 200 beds. Right now, we only, we have 129, so we have a capacity to add 71 additional beds. The point and count, the point and count this year for 2025, found that 241 persons works, but experiencing homelessness within the city of Turlock. The point and count fluctuates from year to year, depending, you know, it's exactly what it says, it's a point in time on that day. But staff and the point and count team is confident that with the shelters that we have currently, and the beds that we have currently, that they, we can handle the homeless that we have in town. This item also does meet the state requirements through our housing element that we do annually look at and bring forth to the council on whether or not they want to raise that cap. So, that's one of the reports that we have to file with the state on an annual basis. Any other questions?
Questions? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Close the public comment?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, passes on 4-0. You done?
I'll be back.
You put it forth, oh, she'll be back. All right, item D is accepting the 2025 Public Health Goal Report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, citizens. My name is Juan Tejada, Regulatory Affairs Manager, District Loop and Magic Goal, Staff Service Analyst. We're going to go over the public health goal presentations, be real brief, and we'll start it off and I'll wrap it up.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so as Juan mentioned, we're here to present the city of Turlock's Public Health Goal Report for the years 2022 through 2024. Get that, perfect. So before I begin, I'd like to clarify two acronyms that you'll hear throughout this presentation. The first one is PHG, which stands for the Public Health Goals. PHGs are established by the California's Environmental Protection Agency, Boyd's Office of Environmental Health Hazard and Assessment. They identify contaminant levels in drinking water at which no known or expected health risks occur. The PHGs do not take technical or economical, economical or economic feasibility into account, and they are not legally enforceable. The second acronym is MCL, which stands for Maximum Contaminant Levels. These are established by the Cal EPA's Water Resources Control Board and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The, unlike the Public Health Goals, these standards do consider technical and economic feasibility, and these are legally enforceable. And just to kind of wrap that up, in summary, the key difference between these two is that the Public Health Goals are not enforceable, and MCLs are enforceable. Where am I here? So now, we'll shift our attention to the Public Health Goal Report. The primary purpose of this report is to inform the community about the quality of the drinking water and to provide a public forum for comments on the city's water quality. The Public Health Goal Report is required under the Health and Safety Code Section 116470B and C, which mandates that any water supplier serving more than 10,000 service connections prepare and submit a Public Health Goal Report every three years. Additionally, they must have a public hearing to accept the report. There are four main elements to the Public Health Goal Report. The first element is a list of constituents that exceeded their respective Public Health Goals, and that would be within the reporting period of January 1st, 2022, through December 31st of 2024. The second element is the type and numerical health risks associated with the Public Health Goal and maximum contaminant level, and it is illustrated in that table that you see at the bottom of the slide here. The third element is the best available treatment to help lower the levels of contaminant at or below the Public Health Goal. And lastly, we have the fourth element, which is an estimated cost to install and maintain that treatment.
In the next slide, you'll see the constituents that exceeded the Public Health Goal, 123 TCP, arsenic, hexavalue chromium, or chrome six, gross alpha particles, PCE, and uranium. But I want to highlight that the Public Health Goal is seven times higher than what the established MCL is for 123 TCP, arsenic's 2,500 times more, or lower detection level than the current MCL, and so on. So these goals are really, really low in detection levels, and those are just goals. We're still in compliance, I want to highlight that, we're in compliance. Next slide. In this slide, I want to also show that Turlock's current averages as far as where we stand with our water quality. If you see the Public Health Goal, it's really, really hard to achieve just because the house, the detection level has been set so low. The MCL, we're below the MCL for all the constituents that were in the Public Health Goal. So that, I want everybody to rest assured, that's below the current maximum contaminant level. If we were to hypothetically put treatment on these Public Health Goals standards or goals, the cost of treatment for each constituent is highlighted on this slide, and ultimately costs each customer $361.96 according to today's treatment processes. So that's quite significantly trying to achieve that goal, and again, it's just a goal. So what are we currently doing as a city? We test over 6,000 times, different types of analytes for the city's water quality. We put a water system, source water, a water treatment plant into service. We have two treatment trains in our water wells, and we chlorinated. We're continuing to do our due diligence to provide good water quality. You can find the report online, and is there any questions?
Questions? Okay, we'll open it to the public. We'll wait to answer after we close.
Okay, I appreciate your report. I've attended council meetings for 12 years, this is the first time this has happened. I think it's really good that this is shared with the public. I've been receiving these notices for the 123 TCP for as far back as I can remember. I keep, I keep a file with all of them in it. So, I do understand, I think it's about $21 million to take care of one well. You broke it down into customer, was that, you know, customer, I guess, all over the city, or what? The average of all of it?
Per customer, yeah.
Wait.
Per each customer.
Okay. You also noticed that this is so low. Well, that's fine, but if it gives us customers cancer or something like that, low is not, you know, not something we want to have to deal with because we don't want to get cancer or whatever, you know, whatever illnesses or effects this could have on us. I know that our public works is working, and they, they're programming these in, but I do appreciate the fact that you're here. I don't know if this is a new law or something that just came into effect, but it's the first time anyone's been here, you know, and spoke about this, and I appreciate that. That's the kind of things we need in the city. It's very important that you keep the citizens informed as to what's going on. So thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public comment. Do you want to speak to any of the? It was kind of just making statements, might be there's something you want to clean up?
I just want to say thank you, and we'll continue to do, we've had these presentations in the past. I've only been with the city three years, I'm not sure what they did in previous years, but we'll continue to try to inform the public as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Tejada. What is the will?
I'll move to approve, but I guess I just do have one question as I'm sitting here. To Mr. Trueweather's point, you know, in the report, it does talk about like the population-based risk at both the PHG and the MCL. Is there any extrapolation that's done to like what our, what our, you know, water supply would look like?
No, so the MCLs are based on per person. So if you have, you know, they try to put if one in a million per, at the age of 70, the risk is so much. So that's what the current state law states. OHEA, Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment, they try to go a little further, try to make it more strict, or it's one in a billion people versus one in a million. So, I'm not sure that's answering the question. It's, they're trying to make those goals more achievable, if there's treatment technologies, if there's anything that could get you to that level of detection to minimize the health risk.
Okay.
Just one more question, when you had the slide up there that was $361 per month, per individual, would that be to get to a zero-risk level? Is that what that is telling you, or?
No, that, well, since there's no cost estimate associated with it, they don't do a rate study per se. It's a, the treatment of techniques available now, and if they take a system, it's not exactly like our system. They say, well, this is kind of a rough estimate, of what would it be if you implemented that system onto ours? And it's not apples for apples, it's just kind of like a, just a kind of almost rough estimate of a number. If you were to do an actual assessment, it'd cost way higher, like assuming higher. Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion.
I guess I'll second it.
May I have a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, pass 4-0, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think Director Fisher's up. There is a green sheet for everyone on this item.
Mayor Booblaq, thank you. Members of council, I'm happy to be here tonight, and I'm very grateful that you're allowing us to speak on this. Is it on? That's the curse of being a little, I always feel like I'm leaning over in this thing anyways. So I'm here tonight with Megan Burke, she's been the council on this, has helped us through. Tonight, we're going to talk about two things really, changing the ordinance regarding our sidewalks, as well as an introduction of an assistance program for sidewalk repair. A little bit of background, streets and highway codes, all the way back as far as 1941, as well as the Turlock Municipal Code, have made owners responsible for the adjacent sidewalk to maintain their, you know, their property. TMC, it's reflected in TMC 7-2601. This reaffirms the local requirement, the responsibility falls on the property owners must maintain curbs, gutters, and driveways. There's been several past council update that have, actions taken to reinforce or reaffirm. I'm sorry, this thing is out of, I didn't mean for that to happen. So those policies, we started in 1992, and then it went through 2012, 2013, 2016, and 2025. And the city has taken enforcement action as far back as 1976 and as recent as 2014. Can we fix this? Thank you. So while we're doing that, the next couple of slides, Megan's going to take over, and she's going to talk about the law surrounding all of that. Of course. Yep.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Director Fisher pointed out, the state law has long made the maintenance of sidewalk and sidewalks and the repair of defects the responsibility of property owners, as has Turlock's municipal code. So the revisions to Turlock's code tonight that you'll be considering are really to make this process even more clear and to clearly communicate the obligation to property owners, and also lay out a process for enforcement so that that process will be transparent to everyone. And the reason generally why state law and Turlock's code have put that responsibility on property owners is that generally they're in the best position to repair the sidewalk defects because they have knowledge of the defect before the city. The adjacent property owners benefit from safe sidewalks, and the city has hundreds of miles of sidewalks, too, so the cost to repair, if that was on the city alone, would be substantial. When we were looking at how to revise Turlock's municipal code to make the process clearer, we looked at what a lot of other cities across the state were doing, specifically San Jose, Sacramento, San Mateo, Oakland, San Francisco. And they all had provisions in their code that made the sidewalk repair the responsibility of property owners, and those provisions have been upheld by courts. When cities have the responsibility on the property owner to maintain sidewalks, it's common to have some sort of financial assistance program, and we also reviewed various other cities' financial assistance programs to see what they were doing. Most offered some level of financial assistance, often that financial assistance was capped at some point, and some cities differentiated between whether the property owner was qualified as low-income or not in terms of the amount of assistance provided. So tonight, the proposed revisions to the Turlock Municipal Code would require property owners to defend and indemnify the city in any action that arises from a sidewalk defect, and the exception to that requirement would be if the defect was caused by the city's actions. It also authorizes the city to notify property owners of when there is a defect, and to, if the owner fails to timely respond to that notice, to allow the city to go ahead and make the repairs. Before the city can impose that cost on the property owner as a lien, there's, it also sets forth various steps that the city must follow, including mailing multiple notices to repair, mailing a notice of the cost of the repair, and then going through a process by which the property owner can protest a notice of lien with the Municipal Services Director, a hearing officer, and eventually before the city council.
Oh my goodness. Yeah. So some of the things that we've, that we've heard, how hard, how difficult it is to repair some of these sidewalks. These are all really small jobs, and so like a lot of the homeowners are finding a difficult time finding a contractor that wants to show up and do those jobs, you know, and often increasing the price. So, we work together with almost every department within the city of Turlock, and we were proposing this assistance program. So under this program, the city will pay contractors directly and invoice the property owners for their portion or their share. What will, you know, is when we issue the notices as violation, they'll have an option to come in and apply for this program. There's two, there's really only a few requirements for it. You have to be the owner of the property, you have to have a damage or a dangerous condition in the public right of way, and it can't be, you know, on the, on the property that isn't considered a, like a driveway, for instance. The curb and gutters will be covered as well. And then, if the, and the last thing is you have to be in good standings, you can't have any other notice violations of, on the property. They're established, we've established them on a percentage base, so those that have a defect in the sidewalk can apply for the program. We will come out and make the repairs under the contract, and then we will cover 55% of that. cover fifty-five percent of that repair up to twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And then the homeowner would then ream, uh, would, would, we would invoice the homeowner for the remaining portion of that. And there's two options. We can do, um, a repair or a replace. Um, and the second part of that program would be if you are income qualified, um, we will cover up to eighty-five percent of those, those repairs is up to two, uh, two thousand five hundred dollars. City manager, this is authorized, the city manager to make this, um, administer this program. So really tonight, what we're talking about, there's some, there's some recommended actions. Uh, there's an ordinance. It's basically the introduction, the first reading, uh, amending the Turlock Municipal Code Title VII, Public Works, um, seven dash two street improvements, Article Six miscellaneous provisions, as well as seven six, seven six. So basically, we took seven two, where, you know, we got rid of it and we put it in seven six. So then that is the sidewalk maintenance repair obligations. So we have a resolution to adopt, um, a repair assistance program and amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget to reflect about a hundred thousand of revenue and four hundred thousand expenses from, from two eighteen measure L. Um, this is our best estimation of, of what this would cost. Um, the, the program is intended to run in a, uh, stop operating about a three hundred thousand dollar a year budget. Um, and then any changes in that, um, we would do through the regular budget process. We also, um, have a resolution to increase the commitment to offset the encroachment permit fees from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand total. That's coming from gas tax. Um, and there's a, a resolution, uh, to rescind, resolution nineteen ninety-two oh eight one, which is a previous assistance program that is no longer valid. So with this, you know, this is a inequitable way that we, the city can assist in, in maintaining their sidewalks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Um, can you just clarify for the public's edification that when we're talking about the, like, in, increasing the funding for the encroachment permit fee, that, you know, this is an extension of something we started a while ago and what other assistance is available?
Yeah, the, that's good, that's a great question. There are actually two separate. So if you were to not come in and go for the repair assistance program, and you want to do the work yourself, you could apply for an encroachment permit. And that's something that we brought back, council, several months ago. Um, it was a program that was existing for many years, and, and some ways it didn't cover the entire cost of the encroachment permit. Now it does.
And the, the work that the city would do and then bill the homeowner, would, that obviously is done at prevailing wage then, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
But a homeowner is not required to hire somebody for prevailing wage if they want to do it on their own?
That's correct. In that case, the homeowner would contract on their own. They would not be eligible for reimbursement on the assistance program, but they would be eligible for the, the offset on the encroachment permit.
Other questions? Okay, let's open it to public.
Nothing?
Nobody's got a trip on the sidewalk coming up.
Yeah.
All right, we'll close public comment and, uh, bring it back. Is there comments or?
Yeah, I just, you know, wanted to make a comment that, you know, I think like Councilmember Bixel kind of alluded to and your staff report alluded to, that it is cheaper and faster for property owners to, to deal with this directly, but it's, it's in the public good for all of these public right of ways to, to be fixed. So I'm, I'm thankful and I want to express my gratitude for staff for putting all this effort forth to make this as clear and, and direct as possible, and then also for coming up with this, um, financial support, you know? And yeah, hopefully that people are, are able to use it, um, because I think it's going to make a big impact. I think we all know of areas in our districts that, um, have a lot of dangerous sidewalks. So thank you for all the time.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
Yes. Passes on to four zero. Thank you, Director. All right. This is the Director Werner Show.
Couldn't get rid of me that easily. So, um, good evening again. Um, tonight, the, the, there are six items that are kind of, they're all the annual reviews of the developments or the development agreements for, for the cannabis businesses. I'm just going to kind of give a, a broad overview, um, and then I will probably have to take them individually as a motion. Um, but I'll just kind of give an overview of, of what we look for when we're doing the review. The government code, uh, the, the government code and the T M C both require an annual review of development agreements. And the D, the T M C requires that the planning commission review the development agreements and then make a recommendation, um, to the city council on whether or not the operators have been or the developers have been, um, have complied in good faith with the terms and, and, and conditions of their development agreement. So at the November sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, the planning commission reviewed the terms of, of conditions of the development agreements. Um, and the following, they went through the following items, and it's kind of detailed in your reports, but, um, we look for compliance with the conditions in the planning division, whether or not they have a concurrent, an active business license, um, the public benefit amount, um, that they've, um, deposited through the year, um, and their annual audits and compliance with the, the police department conditions. So, um, in your report, we went from, you can see what, um, the, the public benefit amounts have been since the program's been in place for the past five years. Uh, but we did not bring forth an, an annual review last year, so we've summarized twenty-three and twenty-five, twenty-three through twenty-five. Um, but the, the program began, the public program which, um, began, which is, uh, in twenty twenty, so I believe it's Firehouse, um, Perfect Union, and one other may have, um, all five years. But, um, we just have recently, um, Evergreen Market has only been open for about a year and a half. So you'll see that, um, the other, uh, public benefit amounts haven't, they're not filled in for like twenty twenty because they weren't in operation. Um, the two cannabis cultivations on D Street, they are not operational yet, and so they don't have a public benefit amount that they've deposited as yet. Once they begin operation and they're open, then they will have that as well. One of the things that we do look for, um, and we analyze are the report, the, the calls for service that are reported into the, um, police department. Um, I do want to note that when responding to calls, um, and the mayor's probably well aware of this, that when, uh, when an officer responds to a call, it's usually indexed by of the location where, or the closest location where he can make contact with an individual or the business or so, or where he's going to be, uh, where dispatch has, has sent him to make contact. Sometimes that could be in the parking lot of the business or the closest, um, identifiable landmark in the city. It doesn't always mean that, um, there was an activity at the cannabis dispensaries or any other business in town. It's just the closest. Um, so if you look in your staff reports, um, they, I did outline the calls for service, um, for each individual, uh, location for the cannabis businesses. Um, the majority of, there were eighty-two from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. So there were eighty-two calls for services that were dispatched to those, near those locations. Um, out of those eighty-two, only ten of them were actual calls for the, um, businesses, and those were false alarms. You know, employees accidentally hit the button, um, or, you know, someone didn't, didn't lock it up, or there was just an accidental call. Um, that's, you know, they, they were, the, the officer did respond and then kind of talk to the employees about, you know, how to, how to set your alarms correctly. So out of the, out of the calls for service citywide from twenty twenty, from January twenty twenty-three to October twenty twenty-five, there were ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty calls for service citywide. And out of those ninety-one thousand eighty-two or less than one percent were actually attributed to the locations where the cannabis businesses are. So, um, with that, the, the planning commission did find that the cannabis businesses were in, uh, did comply with their conditional use permit and their DAs, and that they are complying in good faith with the terms and conditions of the development agreements. So they did make that recommendation to the city council. Any questions?
Overall questions? Okay. Um, we've had in the past, so I just want to publicly ask the question. Did you get a chance to speak to each of the, the six, um, dealers, if you will?
We do reach out, but one of the, uh, we do. We notify them annually. We have to provide them thirty days notice of the hearing for, prior to the public, uh, prior to the planning commission meeting. So we do reach out to them and they do contact us and they do come to the meeting. I believe we had two operators come to the planning commission meeting in November. Um, I believe there is a representative here and, and city council tonight from one of the, the businesses as well. Um, so we, again, we also reach out to them and let them know what, at the council meeting also. So, um, they are, they are contacted and we are in contact with them throughout.
Any other questions? All right, so we will start with, uh, which one? You want to do Plan for Dream? I'm going to open it to the public for Plan for, and you did fill it out. I'm sorry, Zachary.
Mayor Bublack, members of the council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Zach Travan. I'm here on behalf of Plan for Dream Investments LLC. Happy to report, we're very, very near, uh, achieving occupancy, at least our initial occupancy for this facility. We're down to installing radio relays for the fire department. Recently had a walkthrough, uh, earlier this week with Detective Enderbitson, who cleared us on our logistics access and our surveillance cameras. We have plans, uh, some revisions pending approval by planning and building, but, uh, after a very long road, having been approved several years ago, this project is getting ready to get off the ground here in the next month or so, I'd say. So although we're not operational and have not been able to generate, uh, fees for the city, our TIs are effectively complete and we are very eager to, uh, get into operation as commercial cannabis business operators.
AKA.
Not dealers, if you will. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and thank you for the time.
Questions for? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on Plan for Dream? Come on up.
It's not specific to them, it's just a general question.
Yeah, what the heck?
Okay.
It's specific to marijuana?
Uh, yes, right.
Fair.
Well, of, of course. I may have forgotten, but what we going to update our? What do we call it? Our, um, um, pilot program for cannabis to make a, a more, take it out of the pilot phase into reality phase? I'm wondering, am I remembering that correctly? I'm tired tonight, so I might not be remembering. What was your name anyway? Oh. So, um, it, I, I still think that we need to do that, okay, for a whole variety of reasons, so I would encourage that that be done. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on Plan for Dream? Okay, we'll close public comment on that. Uh, before I get to all these votes and my little, my side thing is, my side hustle is I, I don't believe that we should be supporting marijuana. I'll stick with that for the last seventeen years, but, uh, you guys do as you wish. Please proceed.
Um, Director Werner, I have just a comment, general comment. I've, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the annual review. Um, I'm just curious if it's possible, when we look at calls for service, rather than comparing it to the ninety-one thousand for like that whole time span, I wonder if there's some way to compare it to like a similarly situated commercial retail operation or commercial, you know, distribution kind of operation? Um, because I, I think that would be more meaningful data if, if we're going to do that. Um, I think, you know, the point of doing these reviews is to try to understand if the cannabis businesses are really any different than any other business. So that's just, that's just one comment. And then, um, to sort of echo Mr. Reggum's, um, point that, you know, you can see on here, the DA's, upholding these DA's is a lot of work. And so, um, I think that, you know, this is a, a good example of it's, I think it would be better time spent, um, for us to, the city to move out of the DA's and into a different, uh, system. Um, but with that, I will move to approve for, um, I don't even know what number we on, but the resolution for Plan for Dreams Development Agreement Review.
Second. Second.
Motion is second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
No. And it passes three one. Thank you. The next one will be for N H C. And does the proprietor or whomever wish to come and speak? Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Okay, closing public comment.
Uh, move to approve item ten G.
Second.
Motion is second. We call that rule?
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
No. Passes on to three one. Next one is Perfect Union. Open it to whomever wishes to speak on Perfect Union. Close public comment.
Uh, move to approve item ten H.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll?
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
No. It passes on to three one. Firehouse, you ready? Come on, Zach.
Evening once again, Mayor Bublack, members of the council, Zach Travan on behalf of Firehouse, doing my best, uh, Michael Warda impression tonight. I, uh, I, I wanted to just share, you know, in the spirit of my view of the legitimacy of these businesses, some of the numbers that Firehouse put up last year, did over thirteen million dollars in revenue last year, which amounted to, uh, nearly a million and a half dollars in special cannabis tax revenue to the city in addition to the one point one million dollars that it, uh, generated in sales tax revenue. Beyond that, this is a, a legal source for clean, uh, lab-tested into the parts per billion cannabis. And as we know, in California proliferates ubiquitously throughout the state. Uh, and not only is it available, you know, in the black markets, on the street, but, uh, unfortunately, uh, across the valley and really across the country, uh, up to recently and some changes that we saw at the state level with, uh, legislation banning hemp-derived THC last year, and more recently, some changes to the forthcoming farm bill, uh, for twenty twenty-six. Uh, illegal cannabis products have been sold, uh, widely throughout smoke shops across our region. Uh, we've been dealing with, you know, black market competitors and even brick and mortar competitors who are selling these products illegally, uh, products that are, uh, not tested, that are unsafe, uh, and then are being marketed, actively marketed to children in the case of smoke shops being, you know, sold right next to candy bars and, and soda pop. So, you know, as a, as a legitimate licensed business, one of the most highly regulated in the state, uh, we don't take our obligations, uh, with respect to public safety and, uh, you know, community stewardship lightly. And, you know, I, I think all in were a good thing. We may not get your vote tonight, Mayor Bublack, but, you know, we're hoping one day you'll, you'll, uh, see it our way. So with that, uh, I'd answer any questions that you may have, and again, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any questions for? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? All right, we'll close public comment. Um, for the record, uh, Mr. Petralakis, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that our smoke shop ordinance is coming soon. Twenty twenty-six, it's going to be right at the forefront of it. Yes, okay, cool. Um, go ahead, please.
Uh, move to approve item ten I.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
No. It passes on to three one. Thank you for that. All right, now we have, uh, Evergreen Market. Anyone wishing to speak from them? Anyone wishing to speak in period on Evergreen? Okay, closing public comment.
Uh, move to approve item ten J.
Second.
Motion is second?
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel? Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
No. It passes on three one. Thank you, Zach, for coming. And the final is Flavor Farms. Anybody? Nobody want to speak on Flavor Farms? Okay, we'll close the public comment.
Move to approve ten K.
Second.
Motion is second?
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
No. Passes three one. Passes 3-1. Thank you, Director, for your time. You think you're done now? All right, I'm going to open the Public Financing Authority Meeting. And the action item for the Public Finance Authority. Madam Clerk.
It's me.
That's you?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Item before you tonight is simply a cleanup item. The Public Financing Authority currently is scheduled to meet twice a month at the same time as the city council. Historically, the agency meets no more than once annually. Tonight's action would just be changing the resolution to meet the, or to change the schedule to meet once yearly in December, and you can always call for a special council meeting should need. So this is a cleanup item to streamline our processes and then just eliminate cancellation notices.
Questions?
So a little bit less paperwork for your office?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, open it to public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this?
Yes, I have some specific questions I want to ask. Okay, number one, what finances are covered by this Public Financing Committee? So what are the finances that are covered? What is the total amount in money that the Public Financing Committee is managing on a yearly basis? How much money is being managed? And is it possible that the amount under the control of the public? Third question, is it possible that the amount under the control of the Public Financing Committee can be increased or decreased in a three-month period? And those are my questions.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. And Director, you got some answers?
The clerk is asking for technical support, so I will assist. The Public Financing Authority is really a conduit for today's purposes for issuing debt. It doesn't have a formal budget, doesn't have formal actions really unless we want to issue more debt. A prime example is a roads program we use that is a conduit to be able to issue that debt structure. It does have some requirements of annual filings with the state operation, but overall, that's the activities that it performs through the years. So again, it's really more of a conduit the city utilizes, not really a budgetary item or traditional actions that it takes. The council before you here today is really the committee itself. So any actions would come before this body, not any external body. If you think of those questions.
Increase or decrease, and then?
They don't have a budget. There's no increase or decrease. Again, it really is just a conduit for issuing debt at today's formations.
Right. Any questions? What is the will?
To approve.
Second.
Motion is second. You going to stay there and do that?
Might as well.
Call the roll.
Authority member Abram?
Yes.
Authority member Vixel?
Yes.
Authority member Phillips?
Yes.
Chair Booblaack?
Yes, passes on a 4-0. All right, I closed the Public Financing Authority and now I'm opening the Successor Agency for Turlock Redevelopment Agency. Oh, now you're coming up. Look at you guys, trading off.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. The item I have before you is basically an annual action that we need to take. What has to do is with the redevelopment agency that was formerly dissolved and now called the successor agency. With the dissolution of the redevelopment agi, agency, there are still some obligations the city is required to manage. The primary one within this overall structure is going to be some debt payments for issues that were done some time ago. So with this action, you will be approving what we call the ROPS. It's a recognized obligation payment schedule. Again, this is routine. With the successor agency, you're not adding to the ROPS. You're really just taking and managing what has already been approved and moving forward. The next step after today's approval, we'll be to the county oversight board. After that action is taken and approved, it then goes to the DOF for review and approval to come back and finalize the overall. Again, this is routine in nature. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, open it to the public.
Okay, this agency used to handle millions of dollars. So in other words, it does involve some money and that money is somewhere. It used to be in the hands of the city and now you're, I believe, saying it's in the hands of the county. So how much of that money is ours? And explain how that money is being divided up and, you know, how much do we have or how much of our, of that money that is in this fund is our money or was our money? And do we have any, can we get any benefit? Can this, is it possible for the city of Turlock to get any benefit from the money that was in our, was in our control and is no longer in our control? But I mean, I believe this is physical money. This is not a hand-through that you're just talking about hand-through. This is physical money. You have amounts there, I believe. So that's what I'd like to have explained. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. Will you answer those questions, sir?
Yes, this is it. The successor agency does have a formal budget. It has that formal money coming through. The increment in how this actual program is still funded is based off of property tax. We receive our property tax increments. And again, going back to the ROPS, what we call the ROPS, is paying off those current obligations. The only real transaction you see that differ from annual is really the subsidy program that we have for the mobile home program. But that's, as you can see, has decreased over the years as that subsided. So yes, it has a traditional budget. The funding does come from property tax. We do adopt that during our annual budget. What is actually coming back to the city is more of administrative costs, which is the next action you're going to see. So we do get a piece of that proportionate, really just to manage the overall debt structure and a reporting that needs to be done on an annual basis or whatever it may be, the actions we're taking for today. So that portion does come back to the city to take care of that. But again, the overall tax agreement that does come in takes care of those obligations that the city is required to manage.
And the money that we were told that if we gave all that RDA to the governor at the time, that we'd get it back, has it come yet?
No.
Wonderful.
Mayor, I haven't heard any figures. Is it a million dollars? Is it $2 million? Is it $10,000? How much money are we talking about?
Director?
Yeah, so the annual ROPS request is about $2.5 million annually. The bulk of that is really going to the debt structure. So again, it's more of a pass-through. When you look at the administrative budgets, it's only like $80,000 or so. It's not a large overall dollar amount. So when you say, when you ask the question, how much does the city keep? There's really fine a dollar amount. And there's actually restrictions within the statute of how much you can actually take out. And over the years, we've actually cut that number down as things come routine and things start to dissolve. So there's not a lot coming into the city's coffers. It's really coming in and being a conduit, coming back out to pay those obligations and a small portion going to administrative costs.
Okay, what is the will?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Agency member Abram?
Yes.
Agency member Vixel?
Yes.
Agency member Phillips?
Yes.
Chair Booblaack?
Yes, passes on a 4-0. Item B, sir?
Thank you. This is a continuation of the general item. They'd like us to separate this out as far as the actions for the oversight board and for the DOF. This action really is the same overall process. You see the same numbers flow into the recognized obligation schedule, but this just talks about the overall administrative cost. And just to correct myself, it's about $60,000 that we actually request. So in the past, it has been 80. We've reduced it over the years, again, just to make sure you manage the overall obligations we have. That's it.
Questions? Open it to the public.
I'm still looking for some clarification. It sounds to me like this is a laundering thing. We're passing money through. We're laundering money. It doesn't make any sense. We have 2.4, there's $2.5 million. We're getting 80,000, we're laundering $80,000 of it? I don't understand exactly what's happening here. It just sounds like a laundering scheme or something. So that's disturbing. I mean, there are a lot of money, there's a lot of money being laundered in the United States of America and it's not good. It's not for the good of anyone. So I want you to tell me that the city of Turlock is not laundering any money at any time for any reason. That's what I want to hear from you. I don't want to go around it. I want to hear, the city of Turlock is not laundering any money from anyone for any purpose. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Close public comment? You laundering money, sir?
It's not enough to even launder. Again, the debt obligations is really the primary functionality. So just to give you into kind of numbers, the principal payment of the debt structure is about $1.4 million, where the overall interest payment is close to $1 million. It's $975,000. So you can see a grass majority of it is going just to that debt structure overall. So when you're talking about what the administration pieces, you can go to the actual action ahead of you within the packet. It shows, breaks down exactly where those dollars are going. So if you go to the packet, you actually see the breakdown that shows that some pieces are really going to staff time, which is about $45,000. Two going to auditing services, $3,000 going to supplies, materials and training and other contractual services such as legal. So the budget itself is actually broken down in the staff report and how the money is utilized. Any money not utilized is actually have to be reported back to the DOF and gets adjusted on the prior period. So if you don't use it, you actually do lose it and it goes back. So there is a reconciliation of that cash going back. And again, this goes through the Department of Finance. This is not some internal body that's reviewing this information. It does go to the Department of Finance for audit and review.
Dr. Bregu?
The city of Turlock is not laundering money.
Anywhere?
Director Moreno, I have a question.
Sure.
Because this succession agency thing is confusing in the RDA funds. There's a lot of history there. Are you aware, aside from our staff reports, which obviously are publicly facing and trying to explain all of this, are you aware of any information from the DOF or something that is out there to explain the history of this and kind of what the ROPS are and how it all works? And I don't need to put you on the spot now, but if something like that exists, could you please send it my way? Because it might be helpful for, to pass along.
I can definitely do that. The county does have a successor agency board, obviously, that's put together. They have some information on their website. I can send you some information as far as how the dissolution worked and what transpired back in 2011, as well as the Department of Finance has all the annual filings from all the outstanding entities. Some closed out, some are still going, so I can definitely send you that information.
What is the will?
And move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Agency member Abram?
Yes.
Agency member Vixel?
Yes.
Agency member Phillips?
Yes.
Chair Booblaack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on 4-0. Thank you for that. All right, I'm going to close the Successor Agency for Turlock Redevelopment Agency and return to the Turlock City Council Meeting. Yep, moving on now. You guys are back to council and wait, it's good. All right, action item A, 13A, presentation, Director Sims.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, city staff and members of the public. The item before you tonight is requesting a motion to approve the annual investor payment for the memorandum of understanding we have with Opportunity Stanislaus. This would be the fifth and final year of the investor plan next level together. Opportunity Stanislaus is our regional economic development organization and focuses on providing business support resources, helping local employers grow and expand, attracting innovative companies to the county, as well as focusing on workforce development, talent development initiatives such as the Volt Institute, which plays a vital part in upskilling our regional workforce. With us tonight, we have the CEO of Opportunity Stanislaus, Mr. Dave White.
Welcome, Dave. Come on up.
Mayor, members of the council, interim city manager. It's a great pleasure and honor to be here tonight and to talk a little bit about our organization and about our accomplishments and our partnership with the city of Turlock. First off, I'd like to just say thank you for your support over the years. It's been a great honor. Turlock is a very important city in our county, in our region, and we are very grateful for that support. One thing, what we'll cover tonight are just a few things, and I'll try to go through these slides expeditiously. And if you have questions, please don't hesitate. We'll talk a little bit about economic development, traditional economic development, talent development, Volt Institute, which is, which was referred to before, and then the Small Business Development Center, which is the Valley Sierra SBDC. Opportunity Stanislaus is the host organization to that. And then also support for Beam Circular and the Stanislaus 2030 Initiative. In regard to economic development, what that is traditionally is business retention, attraction and expansion. And it comes in many ways. We help local businesses expand. We recruit new businesses to the area from outside the area. And we also help retain businesses that might be looking to either leave California or they're having trouble with whatever their course may be. This last year and the last few years, we've been very involved with different projects here in Turlock, working with the city, companies like Divert, Amazon, over in Patterson there are some, and in Modesto throughout the county. All these projects, wherever they land, if they land in Turlock, that's great because you get direct benefit from that. But even if they land in Patterson, they're still supporting city of Turlock residents who use those, who get jobs at those companies. And you can see some of the economic impact. The total investment to the county is $156 million just from new projects alone and company expansions and new jobs to the county over 3,000. So there's been a lot of economic impact from the projects that we participate in, the projects we support. We also engage with the county, very importantly, in the comprehensive economic development strategy, which is known as SEDs. I sit on the board of the EDAC, the Economic Development Action Committee, and we decide what the course of economic development will be in the county and the region. And that's, that document, the SEDs document is very important because it allows the Economic Development Administration in Washington DC to fund different projects. And so that's really important. Talent development, we have a talent development department, aside from Volt Institute, that served our companies and even the city and other entities very well. Last year, we served 94 companies and also cities. We support the HR team here, the city of Turlock. We do a lot of different talent development programs such as the Supervisor Development Academy, the Senior Leadership Series. We also started a Customer Service Academy, all with the intent of upskilling the workforce, not just in hard skills, but also in leadership and soft skills. Every employer wants an employee that has a really good attitude for work and that's what we focus on. Volt Institute has been a game changer for us. Not only has it served to upskill our current workforce, and if you haven't been following the news lately, one thing that we all need to be very aware of is the rapid pace toward automation. It's happening with AI, it's happening with automation and plants. Any job that is repetitive by nature is going to be vulnerable in this new economy. And so I feel a sense of urgency to upskill workers so that they can have the jobs of the future. The jobs of the future require critical thinking skills, problem solving. They require people that are going to be nimble, flexible, doing a lot of different things during the course of the day. And in manufacturing, that means that these are people that understand controls and instruments and can troubleshoot and can understand and maintain these very sophisticated machines. So that's what we do. And just in the city of Turlock alone, with the city of Turlock, we've had 46 enrollments at Volt from the city of Turlock residents this last year. Forty-two students register in Volt on the Go. And one of our greatest partnerships is the Turlock Adult School. We've done several cohorts of Volt on the Go training right at their facility where they can upskill without having to go to Modesto and, you know, deal with the traffic and deal with other barriers. They can get that training right here. So we're very excited about that and will continue to do that. The Valley Sierra Small Business Development Center. SBDCs are around the country. They're hosted in practically every county in America. Usually, it's a community college or a university that will host. In our case, it's an economic development organization. That is very symbiotic because we meet with companies all the time. We can provide leads to SBDC, they can provide leads back and forth. There's a really great relationship there. We've hosted a number of events here in Turlock. We serve a number of companies here in Turlock. of events here in Turlock. We serve a number of companies here in Turlock, and you can see some of the, just this last year, some of the new, some of the milestones that we were able to achieve. Number of small business owners served, that's 107 small businesses here in Turlock this last year. New revenue to the city, over $5 million, by these companies doing well and benefiting from our services. We were responsible as an organization to incubate Beam Circular, which is the new bio-circular bio-manufacturing initiative in Stanislaus County. We successfully did that, and now they're moving forward on a number of initiatives that we're very much participating with and very excited about the future to come through Beam and through Stanislaus 2030. Through a couple of grants, we were able to get a grant from Beam Circular to, to provide a bio-manufacturing training program at Volt. We were able to get another grant through Stanislaus 2030 to provide free training, what we call fast track training, to convert machine operators to maintenance mechanics, which is a way for them to upskill and, and prepare for the jobs of the future. So we're excited to be offering that here in Turlock this next year. And there's just some additional support. We are heavily engaged with them. We work with Beam to recruit bio-type manufacturers. We have a very good relationship with them. We also are working with them on helping to locate, we've provided a lot of assistance to help locate their bio-economic development campus, innovation campus, as they call it. We have a lot of board members from the City of Turlock, either people who live and work here, people who live here and work maybe for a different company, but this is just a list of those on our board that you may know, people from the community. We have a new member of the board from Gallo who's, lives in Turlock, very proudly so, and we have several that represent entities in Turlock. And our chairman of the board right now is Jim Vera. Many of you know him. Jim is chairman and the president of PNF Metals. Investor companies, we have quite a few companies that we serve, large companies and smaller companies through OS, through Volt Institute. Some of these companies you'll know quite well, and we're very excited about providing them support so that they can upskill and they can retain their presence. Even companies that may have had a presence here in the past, we're still supporting them in various ways. Looking ahead, I did bring copies of our new five-year plan. It's called Rootin' in Industry. I'll hand these to the clerk, and if you can, Christine, if you can pass them along and make sure that every one of you gets a copy. We're excited about the future. We have a lot of really cool projects we're working on. We call them BHAGs, Big Hairy Audacious Goals. One thing you'll hear about a lot is a new Advanced Manufacturing Center of Excellence. That is very exciting. It's described in there. The SBDC is working on a government and corporate procurement center to help small businesses understand how to become a preferred vendor. So we're very excited about the future. And I just want to again express my gratitude. One thing I didn't say, with, because Volt is doing so well, and we have capacity, the lights are always on, we always have instructors, each investor, including the City of Turlock, is given a 50% investor credit each year so that you can actually provide scholarships to Turlock residents to come and get training at Volt. And so please use that. That's $25,000 of credit. That will serve quite a few people that need that kind of upskill training. So I'm in touch with Anthony about that, and we'll make sure that we get plugged in. So thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. White? Hang on. Open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? Come on up.
Yes, I just wanted to say the, to emphasize what you said about vote, about the changing economy. Actually, you, you, it's not your fault, but you understated it. I think we're going through extremely turbulent times, we're going to see in terms of the impact of the change that AI will bring. I'll give you one example of something that I discovered two days ago. You may have noticed the video that I put on Save Turlock about the sidewalk program. Okay, so I was able to take the staff report and one of the resolutions, put it into an AI, and it was then able to generate a slideshow about that, which wasn't just text, it was text and graphics and beautiful pictures, so on and so forth, very impressive looking slideshow. Anyone would be very impressed with it, okay? And then I asked it for like a script for a short video. I did some editing on that, but I made a video of that. In some respects, I didn't even have to do it because there's another function in the same AI to where it would generate like a two and a half minute long video with graphics and voiceover and everything else. And that's just an example. As someone who used to do marketing and video production and so on and so forth, it might take, you know, multiple days for me to do it, and here this blooming piece of technology was able to do it with a click of a button. And, I mean, that's wonderful in terms of productivity, but in terms of replacement of jobs, it's not so good, okay? So the more that we can teach people how to think critically, how to use some of this new technology, I, I think would be good if we can do scholarships, if we can invest some more money in this, I would encourage that because I, I think our residents are really going to need that in the coming year. So that's all. Thank you.
Can I, can I comment on that just briefly?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, thank you very much. I probably did understate it, but I don't want to alarm people too much, but I'll tell you, if you haven't been in a plant lately, you should go and see what's happening there. We went, Eric Noenfeld, who's our executive director of Volt Institute, he and I went to a plant in the Beard Industrial District, and I hadn't been in that plant for about three to four years. And when I was there the last time, there were people milling about, a lot of people on the line, very active. This time, there were about 40 people in the whole plant, and they were actually producing more product than they were before. What I saw were a lot of robots. I saw, do you know what an AGV is? An automated guidance vehicle? So that's a robot that replaces a forklift. It's a, it's a robot that moves pallets around. And we're starting to see more and more of these in industry. The price of technology has come down considerably, and what, so one of these AGVs will cost about $150,000. Well, how much does it cost to hire and retain three forklift drivers? And, you know, you can do the math. So we need to, we need to feel the sense of urgency about this. There is going to be displacement. It's already happening. We need, on the other side, we need to attract a lot more manufacturing into this county to replace the jobs that are going to be lost. And those that are here, if I'm an operator, and if you know any operators, like I just described, people that are just doing really the same thing every day, you need to tell them, upskill, 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 because their job is, is vulnerable. And, and so I can't illustrate that enough. But the good thing about Volt is it's become a real beacon. We're getting leads from companies all over the state of California because they've heard about it. We're working now with a company in East Bay in San Leandro that is really looking this way. So it's going to be, it's going to help us attract more businesses to, to the county and to Turlock. So again, thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and thank you for that, that comment.
Anyone else in the public want to speak? Okay, let's close the public comment.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Motion is second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bibla?
Yes. Pass on a four zero. Thank you, Mr. White. All right, next is study, final report, revised formatting, new description, Director Domi.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public, and city staff. My name is Jessie Domi, and I am the HR Director. Mr. Jeff Rothman, the consultant with Sloan and Sakai Young Wong, assigned to the city's commissioned comprehensive project, will go into detail of the study momentarily. However, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide you a transparent outline of the project, which began April of 2023. In April, the council approved the city contract with Sloan and Sakai to conduct a comprehensive compensation and classification study. The compensation study was completed in December 2023. The classification study started shortly after, December 20th, 2023, with full participation opportunities for all of our employees and our labor groups. Important to note, a study at this level was not done over 30 years. It was an extensive collaborative process involving employees, supervisors, labor groups, city HR department, and the consultant. Tonight's action approves the final report, adopts updated job descriptions, adds two new budgeted positions, and amends the salary schedule to align with the study, effective December 9th, 2025. The city prioritized accuracy, transparency, and inclusion rather than rushing the process. Between January 2024 and August 2025, the study involved employee questionnaires and interviews, supervisor-manager validation, labor group engagement, multiple rounds of revisions between the consultant and the departments, and final review from human relations. The consultant began with 300 job descriptions and 392 employees. Final results today are 203 revised or newly created job descriptions. The city headcount today is 407 employees. 97 job descriptions are in dormant stage, in other words, unallocated not budgeted job descriptions that were used at some point in previous years. Important to share, subsequently during this study, the municipal services department had key developments affecting job descriptions. In May 2023, the citywide chlorination began increasing water sampling obligations. In January 2024, there was an integration of surface water from the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority, further increased regulatory complexity. In May 2024, municipal services department had a reorganization. And February 2025, a staffing study by a contracted agency was completed to better align water quality, control, electrical, and utilities divisions with expectations set by the state of California. These changes support a more compliant and accountable water structure. At the direction of interim city manager, two additional positions have been incorporated in this. The two positions are the Public Information Officer and a Management Analyst. The financial impact of these two new established positions have been accounted, and Director Moreno will speak further on his quarterly budget presentation, which he'll speak here this evening. And important to note, ongoing discussions continue with our Turlock City Employees Association, FIRE Local 2434, and Turlock Management Association Public Safety. However, as communicated to the labor groups and departments, due to the targeted date of December 9th, staff had to pause on any new discussions in order to close out the work with Sloan and Sakai. If a classification and/or job description requires a change in salary range, that is handled separately through the meet and confer process with the affected labor groups. Lastly, the next steps, HR will finalize the job descriptions with council approval and update the city website accordingly and continue and to meet and continue discussions with our labor groups. Updated job descriptions will become the official document used for recruitment, evaluations, and operational duties. Departments will begin implementing training to ensure employees understand their updated job descriptions, and HR will continue to work with departments to maintain job descriptions on an ad needed basis. I will now ask Mr. Jeff Rothman to go into detail of the classification study itself.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council, good evening. My name is Jeff Rothman. I'm managing consultant with Sloan, Sakai, Young, and Wong. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I want to take just a moment and thank Jessie and her staff, who were absolutely incredible. We can't come in and do this work without knowledgeable, responsive, effective, and efficient support on the ground. We don't, obviously, we don't work here. We don't know where all the skeletons are. We don't know how to find our way around, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so we, we rely heavily on the kind of support that Jessie and Darlene Ingersoll, who's also here, provided to us. We met with them almost weekly remotely. Obviously, we didn't drive here, and their support, their input, their review of every single document that we produced was absolutely incredible. We probably put in 800 to 1,000 hours on this project. They must have put in double that, given the, the effort. It's a really tremendous effort. As Jessie indicated a few minutes ago, the project itself started about two and a half years ago. The first half year was spent on the compensation piece that was reported to the council in 2023. The classification piece actually started up in 2024, in early part of 2024, so almost two years. If I can, I like to say, or let's say, if I can be brief, first of all, I want to note, in reference to the Stanislaus Opportunities presentation, something that really strikes me in that and very germane to this study is some very good surveys have reported that since 2015, 2016, and the survey was out in 2023, job, about 25% of job content has changed, 25% of job content has changed. What does that mean? That means if you haven't touched the documents which describe your work program, your duties, the kind of work that's performed here in the City of Turlock, you're probably at least 20, 30, 40% out of touch with what's going on today. So the importance and the impact of these updated studies, while they seem like, oh, 200 new documents, are extremely important in terms of your ability to operate your HR system and the HR program's ability to support each and every city department, each and every city employee. Classification is the central technology of the HR programs. Selection runs from this, from classification. Compensation runs from the classification program, performance assessment, career development. Virtually every single HR program relies on the classification program. Classification program is not a very sexy program, so it doesn't get much, much attention. It's not very exciting. I've talked to somebody, literally, just today, a acting city manager, actually, in a coastal city, because he wanted to know what we do, when we do these reviews. And as I explained to him, not many people talk about them because they're not that interesting, but they're extremely important. The program is based on established standards and protocols. We don't make it up. This is not a novel. It's not fiction. It's reality. And it's essential that it be maintained. Jessie acknowledged also earlier that it's been more than 30 years since the city updated its system. That's a little delinquent. Glad that you've done it. You've got a brand new system today. It's one of those things, be sure to take it in for regular oil changes in the future. That's really important to helping your human resources program work efficiently. What were the major purposes of the study? First of all, we wanted to contemporize your class plan. What does contemporization mean? Rewrite these descriptions so they reflect in their content what people actually do today, not the 20, 30, 40% of the information in these, which is long since outdated. We wanted to standardize them. Your classification documents have been written over 30 years, but they've been written by about 30 different people, and each one has very interesting, very creative styles, but they don't look the same. So you can't look at one document and say, where do I find qualifications? Where do I find typical duties? Where do I find working conditions, et cetera, et cetera, because they're all in different places. And in some, in many, they don't exist at all because they were written at a time when that information is, simply wasn't come. So we've updated all of the, the 200-plus descriptions that you see at this point to ensure that they capture current duties, current job requirements, current knowledges, current abilities that you need to do jobs, and current duties which are performed. What, what benefits do you get out of all this time and all this energy? First of all, you have a record, a documented record, current job duty information. We have information which supports the recruitment effort that Jessie referred to. We, you now have information which supports accurate wage surveys. Extremely, I emphasize accurate wage surveys because one of the key things about your classification plan is that's the basis for a wage survey. And you hear endlessly, employees come in when we do wage surveys saying, I don't do that work. You're comparing me to people, I don't do that kind of thing, I don't do that kind of thing, I don't do that kind of thing. Why do they say that? What, what's that about? The descriptions are all. So yeah, people once did that kind of work, but they don't do it today. So it's very, very important, particularly for those studies, that you have this kind of accurate information. Also, it provides very important training and development, the basis for training and development, and also the basis for employee evaluation. Extremely, extremely important. What methods did we use? Basically, our program consists of collecting data, validating data, validating. A lot of people don't think about validation in terms of classification. Why do we validate data? Because when we talk to employees, they don't always tell us the same thing their supervisors are going to tell us. And so validation means we, the information that we include in these documents has not, is not only sourced in the people who do the work, but is also confirmed by the people who supervise and manage those individuals. So there's a substantial consensus. And beyond that, guess what? Exactly what Jessie said. Her office reviewed every one of these things, and the labor unions that represent every one of these classes also had a chance to review this, as well as management in the city. So these documents have been viewed by more eyes. Everybody has looked at them. We, we revised, we retitle, we combined, we created new classes, et cetera, et cetera. What kinds of strategies did we use? First of all, we start with a 20-page, 20-page written questionnaire. Yeah, a lot of people were not very excited about filling out a 20-page written questionnaire, but why do we use a written questionnaire? It's a standardized, standardized method for us to acquire very specific data. If I come in and simply sit down and start having a chat with an employee, they're going to tell me what's on their mind, what they're thinking about, what they want to describe, but it may not be the information that I need. And I can't compare employee to employee with that fairly standardized information. So I start with that 20-page questionnaire. It's, it was a PDF, available questionnaire. In other words, very standard. Employees are filling whatever they like. We also interviewed employees. We We interviewed dozens and dozens of employees, employees who wanted to be interviewed and some employees who maybe didn't want to be interviewed, but we made a point of interviewing as many employees as we could. We, we communicated continuously with supervisors and with managers and with HR and with labor unions. We reviewed all sorts of job-related documents. And by the way, we didn't just review the documents here where, for instance, we couldn't get sufficient information from employees or supervisors. We looked around at other cities in the valley, particularly cities that are part of your comparability survey for salary purposes, to see what their documents look like, what kind of information we could gather from others that would be helpful for this process here. So this is not just the city of Turlock. This is a number of public employers in the immediate area. We reviewed drafts against, Jessie indicated, and we revised all of our documents to recognize the input that we received from all of the stakeholders in this process. Calendar, I think Jessie gave you the calendar. This has been a long-term project, and that's great. We had an awful lot of people involved and a lot of activity happening. Jessie also gave you the numbers a moment ago. One of the reasons bluntly why this project took frankly a little bit longer than we thought it was going to take is because you made some big changes in '24 and '25 related to your municipal services agency. We were about, almost, oh, I don't know how many months into this project, writing, revising, updating, when we, when Jessie shared with us your new organization chart, including the consolidation. That changes a whole lot of reporting relationships and contents of descriptions, et cetera. So we had to go back and work with that agency, worked with the managers there. They were tremendous in, in supporting the process and providing input to us, in helping draft and reviewing all the drafts that we produced. We really appreciate it, but it kind of balances the calendar around when you have significant events of that kind that occur. In any case, we live with it. Very quickly, every single document that we produce contains about ten key elements. I'm not going to do a lesson now on what exactly goes into them, but we've standardized class titles which conform to industry standards. That bumps it, you know, for some people, that sort of irritates them. Employees like to kind of name themselves in a way, but there actually are standardized occupational titles. The federal government, the Labor Department, et cetera, publishes all sorts of standardized titles, and we tried to bring those to bear here. The definitions are standardized, the form that we use to express it, et cetera. We included distinguishing characteristics which help you distinguish one job from another, typically in the same occupational series. So that's really looking at vertical relationships as opposed to horizontal relationships. We looked at the issue of supervision. We listed essential functions, about twenty or so essential functions for each one of these. We looked at qualifications, focusing on not only behavioral qualifications like knowledges and abilities, but also experience and training. We broaden your experience and training guidelines so that the human resources department and your individual departments have a tremendous amount of flexibility in a very competitive employment environment. We standardized working condition information, physical requirements, and finally, the FLSA status of each class that impacts the overtime, eligibility to the class, and the assignment of bargaining units. Given the, the hour, I'm not going to go through these in great length, other than saying, where do you go from here? Where you go from here, at least our recommendation would be main pain, your plan into the future. The plan should be revised to reflect organizational changes, to reflect the creation of your municipal services agency, changes in work processes, changes in legal requirements, and changes in technology. Ideally, consultants will tell you, you should, you should go through this process at least once every five years. If that were the case, it would start again in a couple of years, as we started back in '23, so in '28 you'd need to do it again. That's not our recommendation. Our recommendation is if, if you did a kind of scaled-down version of this, at least once a decade, your plan would probably be just fine. In any case, it's been our pleasure to work with the city. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to partner with you. We look forward to continued relationship, and we hope the plan has a substantial and positive impact on the, on, on your employees, as well as your employees' ability to deliver services to the public.
Questions? All right, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to discuss this item? Ron?
Just some comments, not really a question. I admit I didn't read the staff report, so these are, yes, I know, I'm a horrible person. So these are just the thoughts that I got with your presentation, so thank you for that. Again, kind of along the same lines of, of my last comment, I think we're going to see very dramatic changes in the next few years, not just in the white-collar type jobs, but also in blue-collar jobs. If you've seen some of the robots they have now and what they can do, it's very impressive. Doesn't mean that they can replace everyone, okay? That's a long way still to go, but I can see, if I remember what you said correctly, since 2015, the, it's changed like twenty-five percent. I can see that happening on almost a yearly basis, if not even faster. I think we need to think about completely new relationships between management, unions, the way jobs are done, so on and so forth. Because there's just so, I don't know if I'm making any sense or not, but if we just continue along with these standard processes that we have, if you're in private industry, you're going to be so far out of date, and your competition is going to be so far ahead of you, you're going to go out of business. The thought that came to my mind is that if the governments don't adapt, and I know it's difficult for government because you've got laws that you have to deal with, okay? And getting an act of Congress or an act of Sacramento is, yeah. But I can kind of see the issue that if you don't, then potentially a good amount of the services that our staff does now potentially could be replaced by private contractors at a much lower cost. So it's, I would think advantageous for some of our leaders to try to think about that. I don't know. Like I said, it's just thoughts that, random thoughts that came to my mind while I was sitting there. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we're going to close the public comment.
Thank you for all the time and effort and countless hours that go into doing this. You know, sitting through your presentation reminds me that, yeah, the, the city is a business that is running the people's business, so thank you for updating our processes. And with that, I'll move to approving.
Second.
Motion is second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams. Yes. Councilmember Bixel.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Mayor Belk.
Yes, and it passes on four zero. Thank you, Mr. Rothman.
Thank you.
All right, money man.
Honorable mayor and council members, the item we have in front of you is a traditional item that we bring forward is what we call the first quarter budget review. Within this process, we'll be looking and discussing different topics that are traditional to some overall presentations that I provide. These topics for today will be the general fund, major and financial analysis, our major funds and financial analysis, a city manager's office reorganization, which was briefly brought up during the classification study that we just talked about, and augmentation summary. So moving into the first topic of our overall presentation, which again, the general fund, major fund, financial information, this is traditional. So this is a snapshot in time, so it's an information that's provided for the fourth quarter, which means from July through September thirtieth. So within that information, we look at overall budget, but we're kind of breaking it down into a quarter basis, so twenty-five percent. So your revenues overall for the adopted budget are sixty-four point three million, where your expenditures are sixty-four point one million. So again, we break that into a quarter perspective, so you actually look at your expenditures that are traditionally going through to date. It's, it's a little different how our money flows, specifically through the general fund because of how revenues come through. We have to accrue some items back, or some funds, like the property tax, are not even received until January. So we look at it from a snapshot in time, but we do factor those items that have not been received, or do you not, do you need to be compensated overall and looked at? Because if you don't, you're not really getting a true snapshot of what it all looks like. So in other words, you'll see a lot more expenditures and revenue because some of those things are going to come through. So it doesn't give you an overall perspective, so we have to analyze the whole thing. So looking at your first quarter budget analysis on the general fund, again, breaking into a twenty-five percent factor, which makes that budget about sixteen million. Actuals for this overall period, sixteen point six. That brings us to twenty-five point eight from a revenue perspective. One of the factors that I highlight, what that's kind of increased in this number, is the sale of the property, which is on First Street, which brought in a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Again, that was received within the first quarter, and that was a, that was an actual action that was done by council. Looking at your expenditures, again, twenty-five percent of the overall budget, which your percentage or your budget breakdown for quarter, sixteen million, where your actuals are fourteen point nine. A large factor overall, what you're seeing is really salary savings coming through the year. Some of that has to do with accruals too as well, but sellers are a good factor overall to reach that number. So that brings us into an overall net gain of one point six million. Again, this is the first quarter review. Obviously, that looks like a large number. It looks like we're ahead. Some of this is going to be chewed through as we go through our expenditures and larger expenditures come in. Although we try to compensate for that, again, it's really early. You really get a better snapshot over a period of time when you come into your mid-year, where you're really seeing your property taxes and everything else come in. But again, you can't ignore that we, how much we've actually spent, four point nine, you can still get a good gauge of where we're going and see that we're actually going into a positive structure overall. So now looking at your major funds, you'll see Measure A is one of them. These are ones we primarily talk about quite often because they do have a larger overall budget and have large activities. So looking at Measure A road program, you'll see that you have your revenues and expenditures. You do see your revenues actually slight, a lot, a lot larger overall than your expenditures, but that is due to the budget process. We have a lot of the reserves that we're dipping into to deal with capital projects. Your capital projects are coming in faster than your revenues, but again, that's how we budgeted through the overall budget process. We had a large increase in our reserves. We're chewing through that to be able to maintain our capital projects as a road program, so it's designed in that format. Your overall other ones that are looking at Measure A general, you have your overall looking at negative three point one million dollars, but again, we did a two, two million dollar transfer overall for your equipment program that was again done by the budget process. Just two million of that was done right off the beginning, we received any other revenues. And again, with these funds is that we're looking at actuals. This is not like the general fund where I accrue back and try and bring some of this information in. So this is a tenant, a sales tax measure, so again, we accrue the first two months that are received in July and August, so you're really only looking at one month of revenue. So that's why you're so light, right? The next one you're looking at again is going to be the water fund, our, our water quality, I'm sorry, that's the sewer fund. We see a large number overall too as well, negative one, or two point five, but again, we've already made a two point nine debt payment structure. Although your utility funds, like your water and sewer, have steady revenues coming in on a monthly basis, again, you have a large, because this is faced on actuals, I don't break the debt payment up, it is what actually what occurs, that's why you see that number in that structure. Water fund, again, still early going through the overall phases. We still have payments that are going to be made to the SRWA, which we'll chew through that. So again, how our revenue expenditures, a little bit different because we look at it from an actual perspective. The next topic we'll discuss is the city manager's office. I do want to stress that we're talking, we're looking at the manager's office overall. Sometimes we talk about the city manager as a department, there's different functionalities on overall, but we're looking at the office, it's a little more broader of an overall structure. So within the city manager's office, what we're trying to do is really accomplish the manage, our strengthen our workload overall and kind of spread it out and create internal structures and controls. Really looking at the classification study really helped us look at the job descriptions and the duties that are being performed, and that's really what the job descriptions, classification study does, is really look at what is the duties being performed to make sure our job descriptions are really in line to what's being done. So using that as a nexus, we saw the overall demand of how to better properly utilize tools within that office. So within that, that overall office itself, you have multiple departments restructuring, or actually being reported, and some, and some of those are risk management, the housing department, economic development, and city twerks. Again, this is a large umbrella, what the office looks like, but it, the workload itself, they all kind of commingles together. So within the budget, we're requesting three different positions. One, the public information officer, one, the management analyst, and the staff service technician. Really critical in the one is, I think, is the really the PIO. The PIO is a kind of foundation, foundation of how we put information out. A lot of times you think of a public information officer as really just getting standard information on a general, general basis, but they're actually more proactive in a sense of the way to get information out before, so we can get ahead of things that are coming out. A great example was today, somebody talking about social media. Well, when social media comes, starts to go awry, we'd like to get ahead of that and put up proper information. So a PIO is formally trained in that essence, although we believe that we're doing a good job, whether, we can even know we can strengthen that by bringing in individuals that can actually have that core aspects of how to do that. And that's really difficult. You have to manage tone, you have to manage how your information's going out, you need to be consistent on how those approaches go through too as well. So it's really critical information, how the things go out in that position. The management analyst is really being proposed because what we found is the clerk's office has taken a lot of that load, but over the time, and for the clerk's office itself, it's, I, I want to, don't want to say it's being elected, but it's being abused in a sense of the way. They're really structured to be able to deal legal aspects of publishing the agenda, PRAs, their, their overall PR requests are massive. Even though they've got new tools to be able to help them, their, their balance of overall, what they really should be doing, has been neglected, and so they can move forward and focus. By creating this position, we can take some of those tasks from a manager's perspective and actually reallocate that and make more efficient tasks that can come out of that department and really make them more efficient overall. So you're going to see that restructure and what that looks like. So these additional changes did get proposed as far as the job descriptions in the classification study, but obviously, as of today's action, they are not formally approved. They are just job descriptions that have been recognized. So looking at what the overall new city manager's, again, talking about the office overall, you'll see a restructure of the identified PIO and a management analyst, and how the overall structure is going to look. Not a lot of variations, but really what you're trying to do here is cut down a lot of the part-time and really consolidate into full-time positions. So again, when you have part-timers, it helps carry that load, but when you have a full-time, you can be consistent overall in how you're dealing with tasks. You can train people up, get them further information, be consistent overall in how we're delivering that information. So that's the restructure of the overall office of the city manager being requested. So kind of go in the summary of the augmentation summary, there's a lot of information that's built into the packet. It's really a lot of information. I'll kind of break it down into a summary aspects of that. So within the general fund, it's actually a negative amount being requested, and I'll explain why. So again, for the reorganization of the city manager's office, three positions that were requested, added value of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. But you also have other activities are going. One is the, is going to be the next item that I'll talk about, which is the human resources request. You saw the ordeal as far as the presentation that have, managing over four hundred individual bodies as far as making sure evaluations are done, health insurance is properly managed, dealing with overall situations that may come forward, whether that's training, lack of training, and dealing with those situations is very broad. So they've overall had to, to manage that and continue to manage that. And this position is not a new request overall, it's been requested for substantially amount over years. And so I think today, with the reorganization of the manager's office and also looking at the classification study, they recognize there is a strong need today to really get this done, to be able to restructure how they do their department too as well. So they say it is a critical point to get that ramped up. And we talked about full-time positions and how many that was, but we're not even classifying the, the part-timers, which is a large number too as well, that they have to help overall manage with, with the departments themselves. So we, but the overall negative impact here is really going to come from the computer replacement program. So in the budget process, we have these programs that we set aside monies and things so that we can take care of obligations that we have in future dates. What we found is reconciling that account is what they budget, so let's use finance as an example, we budget fifty, fifty thousand, whatever that number may be, it's not that large, obviously, for technical support to, to upgrade our equipment as we need fit, see fit. What we're finding is we're spending the same amount that we're actually allocating. So what is the point of having this reserve where we're actually allocating the amount that we're spending every single year? There's just no point for reserve. Even then, with the equipment that we utilize, some of it can be stretched, some agree and some can't, with the help of the IT department, they help us manage the overall program. This is the annual budget process. So, we're basically closing those funds out and actually reallocating them from where they came from. So, just to clarify, that doesn't mean we're taking all this money and putting it back into the general fund. It's going to the appropriate funds on which it came from, okay? So, again, we have some other items that we have as far as cleanup and carryovers. I've really stressed about what that means. Cleanup items are really items that are carryovers, the things that didn't get budgeted properly. A carryover really means is primarily comes to capital projects. A capital project we thought would be concluded, it did not. We need to reappropriate those funds to make sure that we have appropriate funds to budget to cover those expenditures. The big one from the overall total of the augmentation has really come down to the roads program. So, the request is for three point seven million dollars. This is more of a calculation error, human error. We're working through the budget with Fred. As far as one of the projects was actually budgeted at, within the process of five million, coming back and relooking at the budget with myself and Fred, it was like, okay, this is really supposed to be seven. So, we're really just cleaning that up. Those funds are available, they're in the reserves. Yes, it is a large dollar amount overall, but in the grand scheme of the roads program, it's really a fraction of the overall, okay? Other funds coming back down, again, to seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, although, again, a lot of this is really just cleanup in the overall funds. So, your total augmentation request seems like an overall larger dollar amount, but the majority of it really just cleanup overall. And, again, your general fund augmentation, or request is really a negative number due to the cleanup and then overall. I do want to stress that the city manager's office is really not even asking for appropriation because of the fact that they have salary savings due to one of the positions being unfilled right now. So, we're able to cover that in the current year without having to crest additional dollars overall. So, that concludes my presentation. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's open it to the public. Questions?
In your packet, you had a graph about the general fund reserve. And you had the actuals for that. Let me see if I can ask my question intelligently. I think it was last year, we had surplus there, and we decided, we, the council, yeah, we, yeah. The council allocated thirteen million dollars from that to various functions, including roads and pension. Was that reflected in the numbers? I guess that's what my question was, and do you have any idea, you were showing the actual numbers, do you have any idea of what the numbers would be for this year for the general fund reserve amount? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, let's close the public comment and responses, sir.
Great, yeah. So, general fund reserves, yes, there is a standard document that I present all the time to make sure that information is public. As far as the question regarding thirteen million, parts of it you will see within it, because it was, it was two point two that's carved out for capital projects. You'll see that within the document. The overall bigger allocation actually went to the roads program and went into the reserves of that program itself. So, you'll see that within the presentations when we talk about the roads program overall. That document really talks about just the general fund because of the policy, the structure around the whole thing. As that, that document goes up to the fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four, because those numbers are closed out. The fiscal year of twenty-four, twenty-five, which is the year we just finished, is still being concluded. We do, we do expect to be a surplus in that overall year, so it will increase that overall number, not a deficit. But, again, there's still some large entries that need to be done to be concluded that. So, I don't like to give a general estimate when I know there's some work that still needs to be done. So, I think that concluded the questions.
Okay, comments?
Just for clarification on that, Mr. Bridegroom brought up an action regarding pension obligation. That did not transpire, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the, it overall went to the roads program and to capital expenditure.
And I guess, I mean, you talk about salary savings in the city manager office. Can you go back to the organization chart for a moment, please? I mean, that, the salary saving is from the deputy city manager position, is that? Because that's the one that's empty right now.
That's correct. And some of it also is coming down to the reduction of part-time positions too as well, and kind of consolidating those dollars, but yes.
I see. And, you know, we just concluded the presentation on the classification study, and then they kind of gave us the warning of when you start changing things, things, you know, are no longer to date. I'm curious about the, including a PIO with the current position that's partially communications as it is, is that, is that going to work with what the classification study just, just happened?
Yeah, actually, it does. With the PIO being pulled into the classification, as far as the junior job description, the communication position itself, that position's been restructured too as well to pull and carve that piece out. Although, that economic development piece does have outreach and PIO aspects as far as communication to the public. True PIO is really more a broader approach. They take different tasks and approach it not just from a business perspective, but also from a community perspective. And I like to approach it in the sense of the way, they take care of the good and the bad, right? So, they deal with all of that. And so, it's a little more broader in that sense.
Yeah, I would also add that we need larger than the marketing piece of that, and as I unpacked these, that, that position got added, Anthony and I talked, that position got added. We've also had the need for somebody, we've been talking about this business concierge, pulling this back out and making it a PIO, puts that time back into Anthony's position to be able to more effectively and deeply do that kind of economic development work with development services. And we're not really doing crisis communication, or, you know, the more elevated PIO stuff.
Yeah, I kind of go back to the point I made originally. This is really restructuring the department to be able to balance the workload. By changing the scope of that overall position, you allow that individual or that department or division to restructure and do tasks they need to be focusing on. In this case, second moment, follow me.
You know, one of the things, I'm sorry, I've always, I've noticed that for years, council member Franco would ask about, well, what about this, what about this? Having an analyst who can keep us on track is going to be very beneficial, because everybody's doing their own thing, but nobody's, they're all doing it in their own silos, so this will be helpful. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, thank you for all of the clarification and extra discussion about the PIO, because I think, you know, when we have the new tool of the website coming, and we have a communication strategy, strategic plan that's sort of out there, like, I am, I'm very hopeful for what this kind of position can do.
Totally. Councilmember Bixel?
Well, just back with regard to the management analyst, I guess to herd the cats.
It's interesting, because there was some time ago a management analyst, and there's no one now. So, when you think about my role as city manager, and as deputy city manager, yeah, interim, whatever, I'm managing a lot of projects. I know that a lot get put on the clerk, which shouldn't be. So, getting somebody back in there, you know, it's things like thirty years since there's been a study done, and if I lifted up a rock on all of the other things, but it's just because no, there's been no one to shepherd that. So, I just feel like that position really needs to be back up in the office.
Was Holly a shepherd? I thought it was a bingo.
And I, I mean, so, Director Moreno, I don't want to be the Debbie Downer here, but the, the salary savings, you know, when we have a full complement of everybody there, the, the salaries and benefits are going to expand quite a bit in this department. So, can you let us in on your thought process on that, and how the budget can sustain that when we do have a city manager and a deputy city manager, and hopefully, all of these needed positions filled?
Yeah, definitely. So, you make a great point. Yes, we have salary savings, it's not carrying a budget impact, but obviously, it is for next year, because the ones, where places you have salary savings, you're not going to have that potentially next year. So, you really have to sit down with myself, the city manager, and staff and say, okay, what is our approach today? What is necessary and critical? But, understand, there is ramifications downstream when we talk about budget one more time, right? So, in budget, we always try to add things, trade things, create new positions, whatever that may be. When you do things from a today's perspective, because it's needed, you do have downstream implications. It's really just understanding, okay, this is critical, this is probably something we're going to look at in the future year. Let's deal today, knowing the understanding of what that impact overall is all. So, it's, again, it's just managing the budget, understanding, knowing today's actions do impact the next budget overall. So, that discussion's been had with the city manager, as well as everybody else, its impact is to make sure that we can continue to sustain our actions that are today and to tomorrow.
What is the will?
Move to approve.
I can take that.
Motion is second. We call the rule, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Funny man passes on a four zero. Director Shoal, there. You want some money? Right?
Just a poquito.
All right, well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and members of the public. Tonight, I'm bringing forward two actions to request approval to purchase an enterprise permitting and licensing system from Tyler Technologies for the city of Turlock. The first action is a resolution to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to the information technology fund for this purchase. And then, the second action is a motion to approve a three-year agreement with Tyler Technologies for the purchase, implementation, and hosting of their enterprise permitting and licensing platform. So, currently, we have a three-year agreement with Tyler Technologies as part of this packet for a total not to exceed nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This includes a three-year base contract cost of eight hundred and eighty-five, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And it also includes a ten percent contingency of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is included for scalability, as well as additional services if they are required. For this fiscal year, the cost will be five hundred and fifty-four, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is broken down as three hundred and eighty-nine, twenty-five dollars for professional implementation services, and a hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars for one year of hosting the software as a service. So, the majority of that cost is really to implement the system, to help us bring our thirty-plus permits into a digital platform, and working with the various departments to bring that. And then, the one year of hosting is to host it on their cloud services, which I'll explain more. So, this purchase is being made through the Sourcewell cooperatively bid purchasing contract. This allows us to move forward without the city's regular bid processes. And I'd like to explain a little bit about what this system is and what it will do. So, this enterprise permitting system will modernize how the city handles permits and licenses. Right now, our permitting is done internally without, without an interactive customer-facing portal or platform. When permitting and licensing applications are submitted, they're received by the city, but the customer may or may not know where they're at after they're submitted. Typically, they have to reach out to the city to ask. This new system will allow residents, developers, and businesses to apply for permits and licenses online, upload their plans and documents, track their permit status in real time, pay permit and licensing fees online through the city's current payment processing system, communicate directly with staff through the centralized portal. And then, this system will also allow the city to convert existing permit applications, like I said, that are, most of them are in PDF or Word document format, or a submittable web form, into a fully automated digital workflow, where all that data goes into a database and is received in a clean manner, and is processed through a workflow process. This system should increase internal efficiencies by streamlining our workflows with notifications, both with the customer and the department, and allowing approval processes to hopefully reduce overall processing time. It provides our customers with status updates and transparency of where their permit application is within the process, thus reducing phone calls and emails to staff internally. It also provides improvements in reporting analytics and record keeping, thus setting benchmarks for creating key performance indicators or turnaround times to set goals for improvement. This agreement also includes full project management and implementation services, so we'll have a dedicated project manager for this implementation. There's structured implementation planning, which is attached part of the scope of it. And then, we will receive configuration training and system go-live coordination, so it's a managed deployment, just not a software we're bringing out. So, that's where a big chunk of the cost for this fiscal year is. This agreement also includes a no-cost data migration to move our existing community development data from our current enterprise resource planning system. We call it New World, it's our ERP system. They'll bring no-cost data migration of our existing permit and customer information into the new platform, and this will preserve our historical records and active permits. The system's securely hosted in Tyler's cloud environment. This has industry-standard cybersecurity protections and has certifications that receive independent audits. This was something I described at our last council meeting. They also have disaster recovery services and a service-level agreement, where if there is downtime, there's percentage, there's a percentage-based service credit added to our monthly cost. In the event they, you know, say they're down ninety-eight percent of their hundred percent uptime, we receive a credit towards them being down, which I thought was really interesting to see for a hosted vendor. So, this tool also includes some, some new artificial intelligence items, which were new to me with permitting tools. Most of them are agent-based. That being said, it's an AI-based agent to help answer questions, or help residents or developers, or customers navigate. So, what's included in the proposal is a pre-planned check agent, an electronic planned check agent, and then, a AI resident agent. So, these will generate responses on helping you navigate through the system, but it's not just an open AI, it's really tailored to the information we put into the system to help them get through where they're trying to go, and hopefully, answer questions. I'm assuming they're also programmatical, where we can put information to help assist our customers as the technology or processes may change, or new permits come out, whatever it might be. So, prior to selecting this product, I worked with development services, economic development, and other departments to evaluate other permitting platforms. Well, these systems offer similar front-end features, similar interactions with customers. Two of the city's biggest implementation challenges would have been migrating our historical data and mapping old data fields to a whole new system. That is a lot of overhead, will require cost, and will require a lot more time to implement this type of technology. And then, we would have to maintain a separate third-party payment processor, which would cause additional staff time to reconcile, receive payments through a third-party processor. So, I wanted to also share this platform. I worked with the company and have looked at what other cities are using. This platform's currently used with the city of Clovis, city of Rancho Cordova, Antioch, Palm Springs, Pasadena, Hayward, and others throughout California. I did some due diligence of accessing their websites, looking at their permitting process, and going through that forward-facing system. I felt that was a clean, easy-to-use interface. I obviously wasn't applying for a permit in any of those cities, but it was, I thought, like I said, a clean user interface that then would intake the data that we process internally and provide the information. So, the full implementation timeline is approximately eighteen months. There's a lot of upfront work that has to be done to navigate the processes. Over the last several months, I was last up here in February of this year, talking about bringing the system to you. Over the last several months, the city has been working internally on assessing and reviewing our permitting processes, and it was brought to my attention that the time is right to bring a digital platform to our departments to begin doing this. So, in summary, this really should modernize how the city delivers permitting services and introduces the first true customer service, self-service portal that we don't have, aside from online forms. I would compare the value and importance of this system to our enterprise resource planning system that we use for finance, human relations, it's our employee information system, our financial information system, and our payroll system. Those are critical systems to operate within the city. And I would also compare it, you know, just below our computer aid dispatch system, which changed the way we dispatch police and public safety personnel, as well as our records management system to look up information related to public safety. So, I'm here for any questions, and I've shared a lot.
Questions?
Just thank you for all that you shared, because the questions I was jotting down, you were checking them off as you went, so excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
How many permits a year do we process?
That is a great question. I might have to defer to staff. I have a list of thirty-plus permits that we have posted on our website. I do not know the question. I know the biggest one will be a building permit, I'm assuming, and then, I'm sure Director Warner can share others.
So, just in development services, we've got permits from the planning department, like home occupation permits, and we could process anywhere between probably fifty to a hundred a year, probably more. Um, those are new businesses coming in, um, just opening up, that could be anywhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred. Um, and I think our building permits are probably, five to six hundred thousand, so it's quite a bit.
Five hundred thousand?
No, five hundred to six, yeah, five hundred thousand, yeah, so that, the, we're really busy. Uh, but that's just, that's just development services, so that's just planning and building. Um, the other permits would be permits from like the engineering department when they have, um, improvement plans, um, that they would be permitting and, and issuing. Encroachment permits, those type of things. You know, for instance, when, when, uh, you heard, uh, Director Fisher talk about the sidewalks, um, they would ha- the, the homeowners would also have to get an encroachment permit. That would be brought into the system, also an issue through the system, so. Municipal Services has permits, water permits, the police department has permits that they also issue, so.
So is this a one-stop shop for all permitting for the city?
Yes.
I mean, it, really?
Yes, the various departments will all be in the same system. Right now, we're, we're, we're kind of a hybrid of, we have a system and then there's other systems that the staff maintains on their own that are not part of the system. So this will consolidate everyone, including business licenses. Yes.
I could certainly see the benefit in-house. I, I would like to, and I guess if you can answer the question, if you went into other cities and looked like you were going to apply for a permit from, you know, the one thing that I've heard for many years is that, you know, dealing with, I'll just say our city, but every city, when you're dealing with that kind of thing, it ends up being a quagmire unless you're professional at, you know, filing permits. I- it's difficult, so I mean, is it a, is it a, you know, simple cookbook? A dummy like me could apply for a permit to get my sidewalk repaired?
The, I think the short and quick answer is yes.
Good answer.
Yeah. Um, the, what, what it really will, will allow you to do is, you know, it'll, when you go onto someone else's website, they'll tell you how to do, and you have to fill in the boxes, and then you, you can get your permit. So really, it, it's going to allow the public to have more interaction with what they're trying to achieve, and also give them the forward-facing information that where are they at in the process? Where are they at once they've applied for that sidewalk permit? You know, right now, if you apply for a building permit, you have to call staff to find out, um, y- y- yeah, what's the status of my permit? So what, with this forward-facing component of the software, they can log in, see where they're at in the process. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they can't call us if they have other questions, but at least, you know, you know, you're at two o'clock in the morning when you can't sleep, you can log on and find out where your building permit is, um, and then, you know, give us a call later on and, and just find out. So it, it's going to h- have some interactive components with the public that we don't have now, we don't have the capability to do that now.
Other questions? Dr. Borrego?
I would only say that, um, more and more places we've been talking about AI all night, um, you don't have to go to fifty-two places to try to get a permit. And right now, our people are touching paper, and I mean, when we, we actually set up a long-term process where we had a company come in and do all of the process mapping, and, you know, you can ask somebody, how long does it take, and you'll hear, well, it could take three days because we put it in a folder and we walk it over to another office, and it sits on a desk there. So it's just modernizing that whole system. Part of why we talked about it last February, and, and now we're doing it, and I was one of the people saying we can't buy the system before we do the work to fix the process. It would make no sense to just put the process we had into technology, it wouldn't fix it. So I've appreciated all the work that's been done, but we've, we've specifically done that work before this work.
Alright, let's open it to the public.
Uh, truly sounds very good, something we needed a long time, and I'm glad that it's being done, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment and bring it back. Um, I ditto that this is a long time coming. I know there were so many problems within each permitting where, okay, if you had one little thing that you need to fix, then you went to the bottom and things like that, just, you just don't know about. And so having all the work done ahead of that's going to be very beneficial when it comes out, so I appreciate that.
And I will move to approve this item.
Second.
Motion in a second, call the roll please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on a four zero, thank you Director.
Thank you.
Councilmember comments, announcements, and future items, councilmember.
I'll just echo, uh, what Dr. Borrego said at the beginning. Thank you to everyone who was involved in the Christmas parade. I think I saw in the paper, what, twenty thousand people, and as we were riding down the float, you could, you could see, it's wall-to-wall people. So thank you all to city staff for all the work that you do to put that on. Um, and just Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, um, to everyone here and all the residents who may be watching on YouTube.
I will echo that same sentiment, and I want to thank, uh, Karen, her staff from Parks and Rec that made us a beautiful, comfortable float. It was, it was fun. And again, seeing all the happy faces, it's, it's really a treat to, to do that, and, um, it's always enjoyable. I want to tell everybody else Merry Christmas, shop Turlock early and often.
Uh, Merry Christmas, and thank you for, uh, the float, it was awesome. It was my first time on there as well, so seeing all the people is kind of overwhelming how, it was just super packed. Uh, but it was really awesome to see the community come together for this special day, so. Um, on that note, Merry Christmas to everybody, um, be safe out there, and I hope you guys are, um, able to have an awesome time with your families.
Right, uh, I'm gonna go a little off script, script here. Um, if you wouldn't mind showing us just real quick the Measure A, just, I mean, we, we've talked about this forever about accountability, and Measure A Committee has said, look, so having this available, like, if you could just show us what it looks like real quick, that would be so beneficial, can you? But can you?
You're right, of course you can.
Today, though?
Who's in charge of the wifi around here?
Right. We didn't pay that bill. This is it? Look at this? Wow. Finally, look at all that accountability, right there. Appreciate it, so it's that easy to find, and then it'll explain everything up to date. Excellent, roads, that's right. Well, thank you for that. Um, also, I know that I've, like, every two months, I, I've asked about the senior center and the roof, and I've asked about the water meters and, uh, kinda really hoping that it was going to be done already. Uh, I'm hoping that January brings me wonderful things, maybe those two things could be under the Christmas tree or something, but I just feel like we keep telling the, the seniors, we're, you're coming, we're, we're there, but winter's here, and I just don't want them to be putting up all their pots and pans to cover the, the leaks like they did last year. Uh, and then, um, I was on the phone with, uh, a bunch of mayors and the Secretary of, uh, Housing today, and they were talking about opportunity zones are now permanent, and they're like triple-fold for, uh, the value to use them, so I hope that we start to look at that in the near future. Uh, as well, thank you everybody for the, uh, parade, it is my favorite moment. And, uh, please have a very safe, very safe, uh, Christmas and New Years, and we will see you back in January, but, Madam Clerk.
Uh, we have fifteen A, Public Employee Appointment, California Government Code five four nine five seven B one, Title City Attorney Discussion Only, and fifteen B, Conference of Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, California Government Code five four nine five six ninety-two, Potential Cases One.
Alright, and we will report out, should we have something, otherwise, be safe, see you next year.
All right, thumb up. All right, we are back and there's nothing to report out. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.
Okay.